Okay, it's four o'clock on Wednesday, May tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. We've got a, it's a special meeting. The meeting's now open. We'll skip the pledge of allegiance. The item is, I guess there's a project on Center Pond and there's some questions regarding that. So.
Oops, sorry.
Item two is map seventeen lot two. Go ahead.
Lance was calling.
Oh, did you, oh, thank you, Lorna. So, I mean, if you want me to start, I can, I can start. So, um, I sort of facilitated this meeting with Lance. There's a sale on a piece of property that, um, there's just been a lot of uncertainty, um, for all of us, starting with last week at our meeting when we first started to discuss it. And, um, and it just hasn't, I, it just hasn't, um, none of us were on the same page. So we thought that it would just be easier to, instead of trying to put pieces together, if you could walk us through exactly what the, um, process was to get to where we are today.
Okay, well, the, the issue with this place is the lot itself, without instructions on it, is a conforming lot. They've got a hundred-plus chuff runage and they've got two hundred eighteen feet in depth. So years ago, old camp built, no problem, pretty nineteen eighty-nine. Then they go, after I speak with them back in two thousand and seventeen, they sat down at the table of the former co-officer officer, fill out permit, did the designs of graph paper and George had been up to the site and measured. And I'm finding a lot of these paperwork snafus between this town apartment. So when I way out talking to these people and what I've witnessed, I kind of have to believe that there was no malice on their part. So I've spoke with the DEP, actually, I've got a good contact for you guys too, I'll leave it on that. Mike Morse, he's fourteen years with the DEP now, he works for a shoreline consulting firm. So I spoke with him and Lance today about explaining the whole situation to him. And he says DEP has absolutely no interest in getting involved with something like this because all non-conformances on shoreline are dealt with myself and the planning board. And that's why it's set up for DEP. And I explained on the whole contingency here, and there's not enough frontage and depth to have two residential buildings. But, like he said, a residential building, sleeping, eating, bathroom. The old camp doesn't have water hooked up to it.
It's got a bathroom.
Yes, it's got a bathroom, it's got a kitchen, it's got a bedroom, there's no water hooked up to it. It is hooked up to a septic with a.
Right, there's a water pipe that goes in the lake.
Right. Right, it's not, she said you had to run it homes and all this stuff.
Well, I, I start, it's there, you just gotta put water.
What I'm saying is you have sleeping, kitchen, bathroom, that makes it a residential building.
To dwelling.
But get rid of the kitchen, it's a bunkhouse.
But it has a kitchen.
But get rid of the kitchen.
Okay, yeah, well, right, there's all kinds of things you could.
So what I, I told him I was gonna have, I hadn't filled out a permit, paid the fees on the permit, and I was gonna take it to the land board, and he was like, yeah, you can do that, start making trouble. He really wasn't interested in the permit. I just want it for, to start something somewhere. You know, that obviously was one fill out at one time and it's never landed where it was supposed to land. And then Hamlin was off the gut pitches of both camps, which makes it even more.
Well, I think ones, is both of these old though?
No, this.
No, no, I mean, these are, because I mean, he was just out there, right?
Well, yeah, this is what was on file at the town office, one picture of the old camp, one picture of the new camp.
Two thousand and twenty-two on the new and two thousand and twenty on the old.
And my thoughts is with the planning board is to put a stipulation on the permit to either have the kitchen removed or never have water hooked up to that residence.
Well, the, the original camp was expanded, that's what you see in that picture. So do you know when that was expanded?
No, I don't.
That's where the bathroom is. So.
Yeah, I can see that, I can see there's a grand upon outside of it.
Right. So if that was, and there's a tool shed that they've moved that isn't referenced yet, or they're going to move it.
That's right.
So I, I don't know that, I mean, to me, isn't it kind of important when that addition was put on that building?
There's nothing on the file, we can't tell.
That's, yeah, it's kind of like a shed.
Yeah, it's, it's all done, said and done. I mean, both residents have been built, I mean, it's been sitting there for, what, six years now?
I don't know.
I mean, that addition looks old, but is it old?
But if, my, my question for you.
Okay.
Let's go up this differently.
See, the new camp is behind a hundred feet.
Yeah, but it's still within two fifty.
Right, well, two fifty is shoreline, setbacks are a hundred feet.
Sure. But if you read our ordinance, if that camp wasn't there, that was still had some trees in it, and they came in to get a permit, they couldn't build that camp as long as this was here because their total square footage of the lot would be too big.
They, they shouldn't have gotten the permit, George, no, sure they shouldn't have gotten the permit.
But there is no permit.
Well, yes, there is, but I have, but I have to believe them.
No, so, let me, so I've, I've already, forget me as a selectman, now I'm DL, I own a piece of waterfront property. And I know exactly what you said because I've already been down that entire road. I've sat down with George at my camp, I've had multiple conversations about what I can do, what I can't do. We wrote up my shed on a piece of paper, we talked about the privy vault, we did all this stuff, started my permitting process. It never went anywhere. I was almost two years, you was involved when I finally got this all approved. But I can't solely blame George, I mean, I don't think that.
No, but actually, the blame in your situation would fall back on the signability.
But what I'm saying though is, as a shoreline, a waterfront property owner, you're supposed to, I know the rules. They know they need to have a permit because they never got it signed, they never have a copy of it. They just know they filled it out, they, they know, they don't, they know it never got.
Well, if he, if he filled out a permit and didn't submit it to the town, they wouldn't have got.
Then that's why they never got.
I asked him, I said, do you understand, do your taxes never change? The taxes did change, but it was all in escrow and blah, 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 because he built, they built this camp out of pocket.
I just don't think that you can fully blame George in this. As a property owner, people have.
I've seen this over and over.
No, I know that.
In the apartment and in here, paperwork in the wrong spots, missing paperwork.
Yeah.
You know, if I, if I gotta look at the two and see where the fault lies.
But as a, but they have to, me, and I'm saying me, myself, I know I'm supposed to have a permit. And if I never, if I never got my permit back or know that got approved, I'm not supposed to do anything until I do that. So I think they should be, and just because I filled it out doesn't mean it's approved.
I've got one guy right now, I never gave him a permit back, I said, it's on file if you ever need it. You know, I said, I'll make you a copy out.
But if someone goes to the file, there's a permit.
Correct.
Right, there was no permit was ever issued because one was never asked.
I know, I went to the file, or what I really want to do is go look three or four files before and after because I've witnessed this in.
Something to get put in there.
I pull up one and I got two people's in the same file.
But I think the pertinent question is, is, is what you just said, and which, you know, again, that is, you said that the permit never would have been issued, you know, Mike was saying.
Shouldn't have been issued because you.
So maybe it was never issued, maybe it was filled out and never issued.
I understand the maybes.
Right, right, but, but you're also saying.
If this were fresh today with these circumstances, there would be no permit issued that would allow to have happen what happened.
I would have to combine the two.
Bingo.
Combine the two properties.
So myself personally, because I've sat on enough planning, listened in, and I know other things that's happened on the pond, and I'm not saying I'm, I'm correct, but under the scenario, I would be willing to bet a pizza. If they would have come to the planning board for a permit and I want to build this new camp and I want to cut these trees and I want to do this, Jerry would have said, oh, your square footage is gonna be in a hole. The only, the only way you're gonna be allowed to do this is you're gonna have to tear down.
Twenty thousand square feet.
Yep, you're gonna have to tear down the other camp.
Right.
If you want to pull that up.
Or if you happen to own the land behind you, you can set your camp back on that and you can leave the original building.
Right, you can do anything.
There was no hardship case.
No.
But what I'm saying is, shouldn't have been issued, but I believe it was.
Why do you believe that?
You have no evidence.
Because.
Because of what I've witnessed over and over.
It doesn't matter, they know.
I mean, how many places I've found that have no paperwork, it was just verbal, just go ahead.
But the issue is, is if you don't start setting a precedence, I would think, that, you know, now.
I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to resolve this because this wasn't under me and it's already done.
I, I guess the question is, why are you trying to resolve it?
It should be handled the same as if it happened today, as far as I'm concerned. Because if you don't, what we're really telling people on the pond is, don't worry about a permit. You just let it slide and nothing's gonna happen to you down the road.
Go ahead and do what you want.
Do what you want to do, because there's no.
I understand that way. But this, this has been sitting, this stuff's been sitting there for six years. I understand your point, but here I am, I come into it and I've gotta do something.
Right.
There is no paperwork, nothing going on here.
So there's no permit?
None.
There's no evidence that there ever was one?
There's no evidence that there wasn't.
Well, no, there is evidence.
There wasn't, I've got more evidence than there was than.
No, you don't have any, you gotta hear this. There's nothing. That's why Hamlin didn't have it on the tax rolls, because that never hit him.
Exactly, well, I got people, I questioned her, I questioned him, I questioned them together, they're both telling the same story.
No, I believe they had a conversation, but that's not a permit.
But that's not a. George.
I fully agree, but that, that doesn't mean they have a permit.
Does that, does that look, will fall upon them?
I would say it does, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, I, I would have, so instead of me being persistent for two years, I, so in that scenario, I should have just tore my shed down because I talked to George, even though the planning board said no. And if you did, that doesn't mean he's gonna prevail. Correct. Somebody could come back and say, I don't care what Mr. so-and-so said, you can't do that. My brother had this happen to him in, uh, in Abbott. They had an odd ordinance that wouldn't let you build within fifty feet of any road, even a private road, which probably was unconstitutional because you own the road, but anyway.
Any public or private with a public rights.
So the, the chair of the planning committee says to my, my brothers, they are onsite, they've run a tape, he's four feet too close to the road, chair says, don't worry about it, you're good. So he does it. Well, guess what? There was a group of people who said, you're in violation, I don't care what Mickey said, we're gonna make you move the building. Now, he appealed it, and by then, the community appealed the ordinance because private road is questionable whether you can even do that. But they were gonna make him move the building. If that had been a public road, he would have had to move the building, even though the chair had said, don't, don't worry about it, you can do it. Now, maybe he would have had a civil case against the chair.
Maybe.
Might have had, been able to recover losses there.
I mean, I have the same setbacks in Parkman, seventy-five feet.
Right. But just because, I mean, just because he's told, I, I still see how you, and I, my understanding is, it does look like.
I have issues with the whole six-year retro act thing, you know, I mean, the thing was built in two thousand and seventeen. The septic was put out in two thousand and fifteen.
Who permitted that?
George.
You've got, that's.
Oh, so the septic.
Here's HG two hundred, here's.
You've got a copy of that document. And there is a drawing, Lorna just pointed out to me on the second level of the post, of, of the bunkhouse, which has lines through.
Actually, you know what?
Proposed building site.
It's right there.
What does it say?
Why didn't, it's right there.
What does it say?
Disposal system to serve, single-family dwelling, number of bedrooms, two, plus other bunkhouse. That never even got caught right then. Which this.
And there's a drawing here that says proposed.
Proposed building site. Yep, and so they would have done that.
How is it gonna service the bunkhouse if the bunkhouse has no water?
That's just.
Will it be made?
How is the leach field gonna service the bunkhouse if the bunkhouse has?
They would have to attach water to it.
Which is there.
Which is there.
Yeah, I'm just saying, without water, there's no functional bathroom.
But this is all proposed.
Yeah, this is.
Doesn't mean anything.
Right.
Okay, so he agrees that the current setup can't exist.
No, but if it doesn't have either a bedroom, a kitchen, or a bathroom, then it's a bunkhouse. And that's why, that's an accessory structure. As it sits right now, if it has those three things, it's a residential structure.
Is the proposal that those, those components would be, have to be removed from the cabin?
That's one option.
How are you ever gonna enforce it?
I mean, if you don't, you, are you, are you?
I know, I know, I'm just devil's advocate.
If we put in a, you know, a special, you know, on permits we have, you know, on the battery side, in special circumstances, we put in, you know, no water, everyone allowed being hooked up. They may do it, but it keeps us in the clear. We said no, you clearly knew it said no, and you did it anyways. At least it gives us a leg to stand on. I'm hoping the new owner's gonna tear it down, that was talk.
Well, that's my other question. If, if, let's just, like I just tried to start with, um, if this all would have happened today and they wanted to build this new camp, that's really what would happen, is they would have to lose that.
Okay.
They would have to lose that bunkhouse.
Yes.
Because they wouldn't have enough, they would have way too much square footage for the water.
And that would have been the case.
You've just setback. You would just setback. You have plenty of.
Me.
You wouldn't crowd it and you wouldn't. It all depends, it all depends if you wanted to be that close to the water.
I think the extra lot, I don't know if they bought that after they built the camp.
I don't know, it's the date on the deed.
If you owned it, I know the first office, two eighteen, and the DEP guys, like, they almost have twice the footage, the frontage, because it's a hundred, they have a hundred.
Our ordinance says you need two hundred feet of frontage.
One hundred frontage, two hundred depth right now.
I understand, forty thousand.
It's a hundred and twenty, about.
Forty thousand, oh, I'll look at the ordinance again. Where to go with that?
I'll look that up today.
Because that's honestly, that's really what the option would have been. You would have either, you would have either decided to move it back or you would have tore the bunkhouse down. So fast forward to today, why does that option change? Why aren't we still proposing that same thing to them?
Because it was authorized by the previous co-officer.
Wasn't authorized, he doesn't have.
And as George says, you know, what I say.
Don't have a permit. Doesn't have a permit.
But the, the intention is that you know.
It doesn't matter. It's like, it's like.
I didn't know I'm in a fifty mile an hour zone when I get a speeding limit, speeding ticket.
But they did everything right on their part.
No, they didn't, they didn't follow through to make sure they had a permit.
Yes, I mail permits to people or bring them to them, but did George do that?
They didn't come to a planning board.
The planning board never ruled on this, that's the problem. Now, maybe George never submitted.
They're supposed to check his record to see if he did or not.
I mean, you would, guys would know, I mean, this.
It'd be in there.
Yeah, I mean, it's not that many new camps in the last six years built out there. I mean, it's, and particularly on a non-conforming situation where you got this camp eight feet from the water.
It has to go before the planning board, if it's, everything's fine, it doesn't have to.
Yeah, that building, that's.
Build this on that lot, it's over the, it would be over the square footage allowed on the lot.
Yeah, well, even the guy at the DEP goes, they've almost got twice the frontage, so really, the town can just say, you know.
Sure, sure, the planning board could have, but George can't, that's what I'm saying. They never followed the process. No different than me that night that, actually, I think he was sick that night, it was right when you first got on. I came to the plan, you know, I had all my permits, yep.
Yeah.
As I had my permits, you and I had talked, George had talked, everything is good. The next step is the planning board, I came to the planning board, it was disgusting, Lance.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And it was finally approved, but as a landowner, I made sure I was there and.
Until that happened, it wasn't done.
Correct, that was the process.
Because of the privy vault.
Yep, the privy vault and tearing the shed down.
Within a hundred feet.
It was more the, honestly, it was more the two things. One was the shed because they were all infatuated about removal and not repair, um, when there was no value there, like, you know.
Didn't you get a permit to rebuild it?
Yep, but that's, that was that night, that's what I'm saying. I was two years to do that.
Yeah, I didn't know, I didn't wait anything.
Since the, no, I know, but the privy vault, that was the issue, was the privy vault, was they were.
Because you own land across the street.
No, I was told you that there's a potential that you could poke a hole in the bottom of it, so we don't want to, is what I was told.
Well, it's a potential you can do a lot with it.
Yeah.
Human waste home, you can't even get any water up to it.
Nope, so that's why I did what I did and had to get Corinne involved, Corinne approved it. I had the same, do the same process.
Yeah, you have to do that for an house.
Yep, same thing, George approved it, and then the planning board had.
I came down here.
Yep, yep, that was the day, and then you goes COVID, but, and then the planning board, that was the other part, was with the privy vault, is it deemed a structure, meaning a taxable structure?
The vault itself, no.
And the structure's not either, I had to get that clarified. We don't, we don't tax, we don't, we don't count outhouses, and the privy vault's considered an outhouse. So that was the other part, conversation for the planning.
It's an accessory structure inside the hundred-foot line.
Yep, but they, where it's an outhouse, it's doesn't, it's not part of your square footage, is what it was all said and done. So, but anyway, but I just, that's part of the process. Yes, I've built, same thing, I met with George before, you were there, the next step was planning board, then it's signed, then I'm approved, and I can go for it. So I just, for me, I just, I, I appreciate that they talked to George, no different than I did, but that's not the completing process. They still knew they didn't have a permit.
My issue is, I look at it as they did everything right on their end in the town, George was a town employee, dropped the ball, as well as Hamlin's dropped the ball, they haven't pictured the damn camp.
No, I consider it part of their part is drop the ball because they didn't, and they didn't follow through at the planning board to get that permit approved. No different than I've seen many permits come through, same way, it's their permit, they come to the planning board, the planning board approves it. I mean, maybe you guys, is that usually from what you're seeing? Do people always come or sometimes come?
To the planning board?
Yeah.
Oh, how they have it.
I guess what is troubling is, if I understood you correctly, is if the application had been made, it wouldn't have been granted.
Correct.
Shouldn't have been, no.
Right, so.
So I think that the whole thing is done, to me, that's the end of the discussion.
Shouldn't have been granted, but I believe it was.
Well, but that's.
There was, there's no evidence that they never got to the planning board.
And if it shouldn't have been.
I think George did talk to him, but I don't think he took the next necessary steps.
He's gonna go to the planning board to get approved.
Well, he told them they were all set to build.
Now you're back to hearsay though.
He didn't mention, I, I've just, I've seen this.
No, I know, but again, this.
And I don't doubt it.
But that's a really a separate issue and, you know, people's names are, it's, it's, it's like the police officer saying, don't worry that it's twenty-five, you can go sixty through here, and the next cop says, it's not flying with me.
Right.
If you don't, if you're telling me that that thing wouldn't have been approved if they ever looked at it, and I doubt they didn't look, I doubt they looked at it.
And they don't have a permit.
For two resident, for two residential structures, a lot of it.
Yeah, so it's pretty self-evident that Jerry's team didn't look at it. And if they looked at it today as a, from a fresh start, they wouldn't allow it.
And really, I think that's how, my own opinion, that's how it should be handled. Whatever should have been the right way to do it, they should still have to go by the right way to do it.
Yeah, they make the legal, they gotta take out the kitchen.
They're still gonna have too much square footage, right?
And it's an accessory structure, it's not a residential.
But it's still, you're under that rule of within two hundred and fifty feet.
If there's too much square footage.
It does, well, that's what it says on our ordinance.
I try to help.
Not for, my key, I have boathouse, bunkhouse on the side of it, I have woodshed. The square footage is for residential structures. Well, let me put it this way, the square footage of a property to maintain two residential.
So this is what, this is what this said, and this is, this is what this says, and this is why I'm, I'm not saying I'm right, I'm just as I'm reading this. So this says, when located at less than two hundred and fifty feet from the normal high water line of a body of water or the up, upland edge of a wetland, the maximum combined total footprint for all structures may not be expanded to a size greater than fifteen hundred square feet or thirty percent larger than the footprint that exists at the time.
Nineteen eighty-nine, footprint that was in nineteen eighty-nine.
Right, which is a lot.
This is out of the new ordinance.
Square feet or thirty percent larger than the original footprint in nineteen eighty, that's for expansions.
And all, so it doesn't say under that old ordinance, total combined footprint?
You said fifteen hundred square feet, it all depends on how far you're off from the water too.
This is within two hundred and fifty feet, is what it says.
They can't be further.
See, like, I'll pass the hundred, if you have an empty lot, right?
Yeah.
And you build a camp past a hundred feet, square footage is open.
No, it's not.
You can't, you can't go higher than thirty-five feet.
It's not what it says in our ordinance.
No, it isn't.
That's.
Our ordinance.
Our, that's where I took that, right there, it's page four or five in our ordinance. That's what I'm asking.
Read it again, Dale, please. Sorry.
Two fifty.
Two fifty is shoreline zone.
Right.
Yep, it says within, and like you said, there is the hundred-foot rule, and then there's this rule, within, you're still within the two hundred and fifty feet.
Is all shoreline zone. I just mentioned a woman's property today, she was putting in a, a Amish bunkhouse. I called through the woods where I got the tick, make sure she wasn't in shoreline zone to determine which type of permit she.
Yep, but that's what that says, is with.
So the maximum is fifteen hundred square feet?
She's written it.
Maximum, oh, that's a height. Yep. May not be expanded to a size greater than fifteen hundred.
Expanded to.
Correct. Of the combined total structures, so that's bunkhouse, shed.
When we do expansions, they do outhouses, I've counted.
But I'm just saying, that comes to the shed, the bunkhouse, the total expansion can't be greater than.
The state rule, pass a hundred, all there is is a height.
That is the state rule, because that's what we adopted.
It must be tighter than the state rule.
No, we adopted, that's, we adopted.
We just did this.
Yeah, we just did this.
We just did this.
I just took this plan.
No.
I mean, this is the one that we just, we went two times ago.
They amended.
Yep.
Yeah.
And we may have tweaked it in a few places, but we basically adopted.
We amended it because of the expansion rule. It used to be certainly thirty percent volume.
Yeah, yeah.
No one could calculate volume because length, width.
Right, but the state one, the state changed.
So they went to, they went to a thousand square feet or thirty percent footprint.
Which is a square.
Existed in nineteen eighty-nine.
Easier to calculate.
Footprint, first person volume.
Sure.
Because if you put a low ceiling in, in the cabin, but a height is true, that's not volume, it's not living space.
Yeah, because that's, that's what I did, I went on our website on the ordinance, clicked on shoreline, and I can't remember, page four or five, that's where I got it to now.
Well, I noticed our ordinance also said, no camp within twenty-five feet can, can have any type of expansion at all.
And that one did.
Which makes Johansson's camp against ordinance.
Correct, that's why they tried to get it in before the new ordinance.
They did, because of the height.
Correct, but that's why it's in, that's why.
The other question.
The state will let you expand inside of fifteen feet if the entire camp is inside. So we are going strictly to the state here.
The other question is, um, is it, is the appropriate thing to do an application for a permit in that that is water under the bridge? I mean, it almost seems as though it should be a variance that, I mean, if, if you're saying, nope, I'm, I'm gonna go ahead with this, this is the way it's gonna be, you know what I mean? It almost seems like this is, this is not the appropriate form, really. Um, and then the question, right, I mean, the, the application for permit, because it's built, it's built. It's, I mean, it seems like this is an application.
It's all we have, I just wanted to get something on paper, future reference.
But, but future, I mean, I think this confuses, and, and, you know, again, I'm not trying to make it more difficult for you. Um, I'm just trying, trying to just get down to the bottom of what makes it most. Is that for future reference, I think this makes it very confusing, you know, if, if.
I wouldn't sign it.
As a, as a, as a planning board.
No, because it's already after the back. I'm not gonna grant, because that's what you're saying, is you're granting a permission. The building's already built, so.
Right.
So.
There's nothing to approve.
Well, particularly when you say it's, wouldn't be compliant.
Right, you're almost asking somebody to approve something that we wouldn't approve to do.
So, you know.
That's almost as bad as backdating, I mean, just can't.
And, and, and I think that it makes it extremely, for example, ten years from now, when the new owners are going to sell this, it's, I mean, maybe nobody's gonna look that there was a building permit, but it's very confusing that the date on it, well, you wouldn't backdate it because that's a hundred percent illegal to do in any case, but.
I did say okay.
No, 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 I know.
No, 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 no.
But how do you, how do you approve something thirty-five?
Exactly.
That's the other.
So, you know.
Especially something that you wouldn't approve.
So I do question whether, one, when you and I spoke, you, you had said that planning board really didn't even need to be involved because now all of a sudden, everything was.
I talked to Jerry about it and I wanted to, he goes, I wouldn't go ahead and cowboy up and write a permit on your own. This is something the planning board should look at, because I fully agree. I'm just under the.
I know.
Because of George, that's my, my whole thing, he granted it.
He didn't though.
He doesn't have authority to grant it.
I mean, I mean.
He verbally granted.
But that's not the process, you're not gonna, would you?
Here's the thing, Lance, I, I think, and I just, yeah, I just, I think precedence-wise, um, you know, it gets a little sticky because there may be a, a lot of people out. there may be a, a lot of people out there that are saying, now's the time to get my
Sure.
illegal buildings up and running.
Get them built.
Yeah, they can get their time machine, they go back to George's and charge.
Well, no.
It doesn't change the rules.
Anyway, um, I don't know, so, and the, and then the.
It seems to me like you've got two separate issues, and I, I, I understand the spot you're in.
Yeah.
Um, the conversations that happened many years ago may have some weight, some merit, there might be implications to them, but then you have another issue. You have, you have a property that isn't properly permitted, and doesn't look like in its current form, it could be. That's some speculation, cuz.
It shouldn't have been, even back then.
Well, it, it, there's no evidence that it ever was permitted.
Right.
Okay, so, those are two separate issues. When you start conflating the two, is when it gets unworkable. Cuz you can't, you can't be consistent and follow the current rules, because you're giving weight to a, a conversation that you believe happened, but has no evidence, I mean, I would, if I were in your shoes, I would try to separate the two things and start fresh and just be as fair as you can be to everybody.
Well, we'd have to tear down the original camp.
If that's the only remedy, then there are hardship exceptions, there are all sorts of exceptions I've read about, but you, it's conflating the two things, I think, is gonna make it impossible.
To go forward.
The, the conversation that supposedly happened, that didn't result in a permit, and the condition of the property today, and what needs to be done to solve it.
Today.
We have today we gotta deal with. These folks want a piece of property that is marketable, that is legal, and so you guys gotta help them do that. But, a conversation that maybe happened six or seven years ago, there's no evidence of it, that doesn't, they don't.
Well, I mean, you, you, just by this, you can tell it happened. I mean, Corinne knew about it, George knew about it.
Sure. But that's, but this isn't a building permit, that's why all this says is propose, propose, propose.
George's folder in his closet somewhere.
Well, no, the permit, like you, you said, it never would've been issued in its current form, that, that to me is self-evident, that he never applied for the permit.
He should.
He should have.
Shouldn't have been permitted, but George most likely would have.
Right, but he would've.
You can't issue a permit, can you? Without going to the planning board? For shore land zoning, you can just.
So why do we, so why do we?
If it's non-conforming, I'm supposed to go to the planning board, but George and Jerry used to fight about this all the time, he was like, I don't need your permission for this land.
But under this, even though it's a conforming law, it's, wouldn't it be a non-conforming build, because they would've been over the square footage?
It's a conforming law until nineteen eighty-nine, William built a second one, it became non-conforming because it was a real destruction.
Sure.
So at that point, it was a non-conforming law.
Right. But that's what I'm saying, under that, now that I wanna build this new camp.
They could've either expanded on this.
Not much.
Or got rid of it and built a new gap away, it should've happened.
Correct, so when, under that conversation, is that something George could've granted, or the planning board agreed?
It should've gone through the planning board, but George could've just written it.
But that isn't, right, but that's not the process.
That's like the police officer telling you, go ahead, go sixty.
Right. Yeah, we can't, they don't have, then, either way, George would've signed a permit, and they should've had a copy.
Like George definitely, for enough money, you can fake your way through anything.
Well, I know, but, we need to fix this stuff, is all. And again, it's, to me, it's precedence, I mean.
That's what I'm concerned about.
Right.
And Dale and I live on ponds, and, um.
Oh, this is, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and you would do it as well, and, um, you know, the problem, and it was just like, um, you know, the case last year, or the year and a half ago, on my pond, you know, that we had the, that.
D E P was involved in that.
D E P.
I got the solar panels.
Oh, no, not the solar panels, the other one, the camp that was.
The one that was burned down.
Burned down.
Right.
And then elevated.
And then elevated, and then they had to move it.
That was before me, must've.
Yep, it was. But it was another.
Similar circumstances.
Yes, yes.
Well, conversations.
Conversations.
But then D E P's not.
Yep, and it was.
We're following the rules.
Yeah, like I said, I talked to the D E P guy today about this.
But he doesn't work for, he did work for D E P.
Right, but he worked for D E P for fourteen years, he said the D E P absolutely just don't get involved with this.
Whether they do or they don't, I don't think they would approve that X amount of square footage on the law. That's really the question, that's the issue, is with that building there, there's too many, too much square footage on that wall.
We didn't even talk about square footage, he just told me, forget it, the kitchen is bunkhouse.
And, but there again, that's what I'm saying, it's the, the overall square footage that's there is the issue. That's what would've blocked the permit then, and that's what would've blocked the permit today.
See, the planning board, we only discuss square footage passing through.
That's a bigger issue. If you're not, I mean, we shouldn't have a ordinance.
Kind of an expansion, you worry about.
Yeah, which is what this would be, you're expanding the square footage on the law. It's new bill, but it's still a, a square footage expansion, and you still have to count all the, every dwelling, every structure on that lot, all has to add up.
I'm gonna have to read ours again.
Correct. Yeah, I'd be interested, I wanna build a garage across the street, so. And I'm within two hundred and fifty feet, so.
Well, it's a state camp.
Well, mine's a separate law, so it's different anyway, I'm not all on the same horizon. That square footage won't count on my square footage.
Sure, your septic said, oh, that too.
Leach field's gotta be there.
So, um, just, um, is Jerry going to do some, um, forensic research with regard to, um, to see if he's fine?
He's supposed to be looking through his minutes, because it would've been in the minutes if it was discussed.
And if it was two thousand fifteen.
Two thousand seventeen.
Oh, seventeen, I don't think I was on the planning board at that point, I think I was on the sled board.
Six years?
Yeah, I was on the sled board.
Right after you got off.
Right, right after I got off.
It's all your fault.
Which, cuz I always did the minutes, so, um.
But this started in fifteen, so there may have been a conversation before that. I mean, they had their site evaluation, who knows when they, when did he actually completely sign off on this, in fifteen?
Who signed off on it?
That would've been, so the permits, this start, the site evaluation was done in fifteen.
The copy in the town, George did not, did not have the inspection.
Oh, so you don't even know when the work was actually done? I mean, this, these dates are just when, when the site evaluation.
Once it's permitted, George permitted it, they paid him, once they pay him, it's only given two years.
Sure, but we don't have a building permit either, so, doesn't mean that this was done in two years, because you don't have an inspection to say when.
And does the entire amount go to the CEO?
Seventy-five percent.